I guess we start the meeting. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. This is kind of a question and answer situation. We're gonna try to answer as many questions as we can. I'd like to also say that as far as the council meeting, the only thing we have on agenda from the trash is opening up the bids for the dumpsters and the roll-offs, nothing else. The trash will be discussed. I would like, anybody who wants to speak, please come to the podium. That would help us kind of keep a civil discussion here.
Can you start here first?
Please do.
We talked about support for the trash. Does it have support for this?
Yes.
Can we not make a motion, put it on April ballot, if citizens want it?
You can make any motion you want to the council, but it's not made.
Do that in new business, I guess, in the council meeting? Can you make a motion, put this trash on the ballot in April, if citizens want it?
Yes, sir, you can do that in new business, yes, sir.
In new business?
Uh huh. That's what you... I can't control your counsel.
I didn't know if we needed to do it now, or...
No, I mean, you can just have the council. I mean, we don't have any authority to do that. Apparently, we just go through the council. Really, I don't know, sorry. I mean, people have any questions? I mean, anybody wants to... I mean, I've talked to somebody today, so... Brenda says we need your name, so we can wrap that down. She's taking notes.
Michael Lewis.
Michael Lewis.
His address also.
Name and address?
Two oh four Maple Street.
Yes, sir. And I got a question for you. Who do you have trash service for?
Sharp's Disposal.
Great, perfect. I'm glad you did. How can I help?
That's what I wanted to say about do the public not have the right to choose who they provide on.
So basically, they do it this morning, yes?
That's all I was wanting.
Okay. What else?
I don't hear a call.
Yes, please. If you want to stay seated, that'd be fine.
I wondered if you had a quorum.
For what?
As far as the committee, yes.
To vote on anything?
Nothing's gonna be voted on here. Nothing'll be voted on tonight. I mean, we're just talking about... We're just answering questions. If you have any questions about anything, you can ask.
I thought the chairman made a motion.
No, he asked if he could make a motion in the council meeting, and that's up to the council. That's in the next meeting. Anything else?
Keith Westerfield, I live in Ward Three.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimate on what the trash bill might cost for Sea Light Water?
Put your trash away. We want all that from everybody.
Right now, I have Sharp's.
Great.
Do we have an estimate on what it might be when Sea Light Water is doing it?
We've got an estimate between fourteen and sixteen dollars, is what we're looking at.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Jenkins, two oh three Pool Street.
Okay, and your person's with this? Sharp, great.
Okay. Why is it that everything has changed? I know that they brought this up once before, and then Sharp's took over, and now, all of a sudden, it's back on the board again.
Why has it changed?
Yes.
Another question. And I was asked this this morning, from somebody that called me, and basically, the first time around when we talked about this, I wasn't against one carrier doing it. I was just against the bid process, how it was operated. And when you look back at the tapes on it, I mean, you look back and you see, I was at a time, I didn't even really know who Sharp was, or who proposed it to him, and I had called other cities, and they were all happy with it. But it did not, you know, there was a bid accepted, it did not have, there was no contract. And what happened was the bids were bid, it was like apples to oranges. I mean, it wasn't, one bid was strictly to pick up the trash and nothing else, and the other bid was, a bunch of other stuff was added into it. So there was a difference of a little less than ten dollars. And so the higher bid at the time was accepted. And that's when the people came, several people, not just me, said, you know, let's take a whole lot of money out of the community, why can't we go with a lower bid? And so bidding process, it's just, it's, the bidder put out that he bid what was asked for, and I think we're gonna kick this back into this fund, and we're gonna do this, and this, and this. And so that's why, that's why it was kicked out at that time.
Okay. I mean, what is the purpose of having just one, instead of leaving it like it is?
Okay, so like it is, and I had this discussion with somebody this morning, and we had a lot of good points, even though we disagreed on how it should be, we agreed on what we wanted to end up as. And so the problem we got is, we've got ordinances on the book that say you gotta have trash, you gotta have your trash picked up, you gotta pay for trash, you gotta pay the person that picks it up. Those are all laws that we have in place. The problem is, there's no way to, there's no way to enforce it because when code enforcement goes around, and they got a house here, and a house here, and this guy's got a trash can in front of his house, this guy doesn't, and then their yards, say, both their yards are picked up. Well, they go around back, this actually happened to one of Diane's houses. I called Diane.
It's me all the time.
I said, Diane, I said, hey, there's, your rental properties is really a mess in the front. She said, I'll take care of it. Well, the next week, it was cleaned up. I'm like, that's really nice. Well, I looked in the backyard, and it took all the trash from the front and stuffed it in a shed in the back. Well, that's a hip hazard for state regulations to do that, to store trash like that. So those are the kind of things that we're trying to resolve by everybody having a service that we can check and see, you know, why aren't you doing what you're supposed to?
All right, okay. Now, that's all and good for the cans of trash.
Yes.
What about items, mattresses, furniture? I deal with this crap all the time.
Yeah.
People throw it out.
Yeah.
Okay, is the city gonna pick it up?
Yes. So our plan is to have a grapple truck that's gonna go around and pick up that kind of stuff. We're also looking at picking up the limbs, yard waste, along with that. So in other words, you could just go sit your limbs out in front, pile your limbs out in front of your house, and they'll be picked up also.
Okay. Now, as far as landlords, when this all goes into effect, everybody has to have trash service.
Yes.
What if they don't use it? I mean, who's gonna get cited for this?
So, under the state law right now, what you're running into most likely is, it says that the landlord has to supply a can to the renter, and the renter is supposed to handle the disposal of it correctly, okay?
Right.
So what's happening is, is not only is your renter getting a ticket, but so are you. So that's why, you know, like Riley could call us and, golly, I just got seven more today.
Right.
You know, this ain't got anything to do with me, I rented this house to somebody. That's not, that's not ours. That is, that's actually per the code that we adopted as law, the building code.
Property maintenance code.
Exactly. Under the property maintenance.
That's probably that I'm having. I furnish cans for all of my properties.
Yes.
And I'm always in court, you know, because they don't clean up their mess.
Yeah.
Or they'll send furniture out.
Yeah.
Well, they don't have, they don't pick up furniture. So therefore, if they've got one piece of furniture sitting out, and they have no way to get rid of it.
Well, and that's understandable, and that's the plan, is to do that.
Okay. So that would be one of the things, one of the changes that would be made?
Yes.
If they would pick up stuff like that, limbs?
And I think they pick up some stuff. And sometimes I just wonder, how does this house, how many mattresses can they have?
A bunch.
I mean, it's amazing to me, I mean, if I talk right around, there's another mattress in front of the same house.
Yeah, they have four couches too, you know?
Yeah.
And it's like, what do we do with them? Because if the landlord doesn't drive by there and see it, sitting in the yard, and we don't take it and get rid of it ourselves, we're gonna go to court.
You know, really, what we're doing for you, as far as how it would shift the burden off of you, by going to the, to the City, Sea Light Water's bill as, as a service, really take you out of it. So we would move between whoever the winter bill's with, and it could be on electric bill, so it would go to that person that has the service.
Okay, so we wouldn't be driving to court anytime they didn't pick the trash up, because we're the property owners.
Yeah.
That's what we keep getting told.
That's right.
It falls back on us.
Now, now, there is a problem with all this.
Right.
None of this could happen for two years.
Right.
So, I mean, so for the next two years, something, there is a problem.
Right. But is it all just gonna be worked out before the decisions are made?
Correct, yes.
Because, I mean, that's something that, you know, that we need to know, especially if we're gonna be able to vote on this.
Yeah.
I mean, because if it's not gonna change anything that's happening now, then why change anything?
Yeah. And why, you know, I, first of all, we, Diane, they made some valid points and some great points, we couldn't agree on some stuff, but our end result, we wanted the same thing.
Right.
And so how to get to that point is the problem. I mean, that's what we're trying to do. Why it's been seven or eight months, it's been since Ju, I'd say probably started in November or so, perhaps since January, so why it's been seven months before this all came back, is because we spent the last four or five months with outside representation, legal representation, seeing how, how do you change to municipal, municipal service legally, and what has to be done, what steps have to be gone through.
I said, I was just, you know, curious, because I know that they had talked about doing this earlier, and then it got dropped, and now, you know, it's back to this case. I was just wondering what...
It's actually been multiple times, you know? Twenty years ago, it was, we had four or five trash haulers inside the city limits.
Right.
And at this point today, we have zero trash haulers within the city limits of Kenne. So it got shot down back then. The most recent time that it got shot down was because of the bidding process, not because of, this is a terrible idea, we need to scratch it and stop it and do all that, it was how the deal was put together, and then it was pushed on Sea Light Gas and Water. Here, we made this deal, you guys implement it now.
Right, okay.
And we've spent seven months trying to, you know, four months actually, meeting and emailing with an attorney, pretty much daily, trying to get everything worked out. And he's been going through all of our ordinances, updating those, and making sure that all of our i's are dotted and all of our t's are crossed, so that when Sea Light Gas and Water takes it on...
And that's not all finished. I mean, that's still, that's, we met last Thursday, and said, hey, you work on this, this, and this, we need to separate the residential from the commercial, which would be dumpsters and roll-offs. Those would be totally taken out of code, and have their separate, separate stuff, so that doesn't affect that.
Okay.
So...
Because I know at one point, the code was that you could not have a dumpster sitting at your residence more than so many days.
But it's actually, it's actually, like, say, if you're planning out, it's actually six months, I think, the code says.
For sure. But you can't use it, you can't use it for trash.
Right, right.
And that's what we've got people doing, putting dumpsters out and putting trash in it, which is, you know...
See, a lot of the code that we have, current code, is just, I don't, it's not, I don't really have a say, like, for instance, everybody that handles trash in the city of Kenne is supposed to have a license specifically for that, that's approved by the city council. I can't find anybody that has that accreditation, or that there really is that such a thing.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Well, like, you have a business license, just regular business license, but there's also one, there's a code that says that you have to have a trash guard...
General liability, all the way back is what you have on...
Yeah, yeah.
That's all we was asked for.
And that's what I'm saying, that's not really the code, but you're not the only one, nobody has any kind of code. Yeah, you could come up, I mean, I'm sure you'll come up. Oh, thank you.
Let's do that comment. The reason we shut it down last night was because of COVID. I received about ninety phone calls saying, we do not want our choice taken away for picking up our trash.
But you also, I also had phone calls that said, I don't have trash, because I just throw somebody's dumpster, which is against the law.
Oh, yes.
And I'll tell you how specific that law is, this is a state law. If you walk by and you have that bar right there, and you throw it in a dumpster, it's not against the law. But if you have more than a half a cubic foot, which would be about a Walmart bag, or less, a little bit less than a Walmart bag, and throw it in somebody's dumpster, you're in violation of the state law.
That was the reason they got shut down last night.
There is a city ordinance that says, any, put in anything, and somebody else's dumpster.
And I'm just, I just quote state law, just because we, we have an ordinance that says nobody put anything in somebody else's dumpster. Exactly. I don't know what it says, explain it, can't, I've got it right here, or right here somewhere. But anyway, so some of the, some of what you run into is, is some of the ordinances that we have just make the state law more strenuous. So in other words, like Terry said, you can't throw anything in anybody else's trash or dumpster. And if you think it doesn't happen, you're wrong. I, in my office, I ain't setting my can outside, because it gets filled up. So, you know, I've had people say, well, they won't use their, they won't use the trash can if you give it to them. Well, they're looking to throw their trash away somewhere. And I got a picture after picture, a picture where it's going out, out in Kenne. You don't have farmers that send me stuff and say, how do we stop this? And some of that is just, for instance, if anybody that doesn't have a license to handle trash in the city, which at the end of, at the time that Sea Light Water would take it over, there would be one license given to Sea Light Water. Anybody else could be stopped and say, hey, you can't carry trash through our city, you can't, you know, you can't, you don't, you're not licensed to do this, where are you taking it? We can follow you out to the transfer station, and you can dump it. Because what happens is, and the rental property, what I run into is people have sent pictures saying, I found this in so-and-so's rental property, and they, they paid, somebody's like, here, here's a hundred bucks, go get rid of all this stuff that's left there. Well, so often, that ends up on somebody's farm, or at ditch nineteen, or, where you can go out to the, where the Pepsi place, where turn a left, and you can find all the trash you want to find. I mean, I've got pictures of it and videos of it, it's insane. You don't have to go far to find it. And the person I talked to this morning said, yeah, go out Kenne, find it, you just drive around. And so that's really what the plan is, to try to fix that. And, you know, people say, well, how do you, what, what, just made you come up with that? I said, well, we went to a bunch of different cities, several different cities, should I say, and how do you handle it, and what's good and what's bad? And that's how we kind of came to the implement, what we wanted, the implement. Now, on the flip side, I'm the communist here, I guess, I'm the total communist and everything else. I just kind of fell into spokesperson of other people, and it just kind of snowballed. So...
What's wrong with putting this to a vote, for the citizens?
It's already been brought out.
Sorry, I was like, so what's the problem with that?
There's not a problem with that.
That motion's been brought up in the council?
Since, you know, ninety or a hundred people were against it, people were for it, I had people for it, against it, whenever the city council awarded Sharp, the local company that's three hundred yards down the road, right there, their shop is in office. Why don't you, why don't you just put it to a vote, that way, the citizens, instead of, you know, before, you gotta say it was forced down the three hundred and ninety Ocean Water, trying to force it down.
Okay, here's my question.
Let's put it to the vote.
Here's my question for everybody, anybody, anybody that can answer this would be great. All right, let's say we put it to the vote, let's say it doesn't pass, because the people that don't have trash don't want to have trash, the people don't want to change, which is understandable, I mean, twenty years ago, when we talked about it, my dad's like, I've been on Smithson for forty years, I'm not changing, I don't care what y'all say. And I'm like, I understand that, but, and, because when I was on council twenty years ago, it was about twenty years ago, this came up, and, and it was a nine to one vote, not to do it. Okay? So I said, let's put it to the people. No, I'm sorry, it was a nine, it was a nine to one vote to do it. And I was the one person that said, no, because at that time, there was five local people that picked up trash, and I said, no, no, I don't think we should do this. So they said, so I convinced the council that, hey, let's go ahead and put it to the vote, so it was voted down. So with that going on for twenty years, it's only gotten worse and worse and worse. So my question to you is, is if we put it to vote, that gets voted down because nobody telling me where I'm getting my trash? I don't want to have to have trash. You know, for whatever reason, how are we gonna fix what's there now? How are we gonna fix it?
Give your ordinances teeth, like you said, you're going to...
You're changing your ordinances to fit you that you're...
That's what y'all were saying.
So changing the ordinances to have teeth, and then let it be a free market.
Chris, Chris, hold on a second. Are you guys gonna, are you guys gonna let the city know who is not paying their trash?
That's not our job.
But no, no, stop, stop, listen, yeah, if you will work with us, yes, we will gladly work with you, but y'all are fighting against us. Y'all are trying to push us out of here, instead of, I bought Smithson, everything that I have done to grow my business, I've done the right way. I bought Smithson's out, I ran it, I'm trying to buy John out, I'm trying to run that. Work with us, instead of trying to kick us out of here. I mean, it don't make no sense, y'all, we're just against it here just a while ago, all don't want it, people don't want it, so now, y'all want to shove it down our throats, that y'all want to take it over, which I think it's a conflict of interest, with you being on here, and you being on here, and your dad being on there, it, it, it's a big conflict of interest.
Can I, can I ask you a question? You said in our board meeting, you were, eight to twelve people were gonna go out without jobs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll answer that.
Okay. Please, yeah, because I'm all over, I was all over social media.
Because I heard the radio station, okay. So, all the friendly guys that we hired for Friendly, that's nine guys. But we also have a Monday crew, a Tuesday crew, and a Friday crew, that's six to seven guys. Without those six to seven guys, their hours are gonna be cut significantly.
And we were in the process of starting to do, since we've got so much here, is starting to do ward by ward, to eliminate so many trucks, but we keep having to come in here and fight this, so, I mean, we're not having the time to make that.
How many, you've claimed multiple times you're gonna go out of business. You've got seven or eight different contracts.
We never said we were gonna go out of business, we said this was going to hurt us.
Seventeen people are gonna lose their jobs?
They're running Kenne, yes.
Our seven, are you gonna have seventeen less employees at Sharp's disposal if this goes through?
Yes.
No, nine, not, listen, nine that worked for Friendly...
I can only name one that's gonna go bankrupt.
Nine that worked for Friendly Way, they only work in Kenne. Then we had for years, a Monday, a Tuesday, and still do, and a Friday crew. Those guys work in other cities, but also on Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, work here in Kenne. Their hours are gonna be cut.
Not counting all the loans that we've taken to make this work, so...
So if City like Gas and Water...
It's just to put us in a big bind.
So if City like Gas and Water hires four or five people, which you misled and said we were gonna hire two people.
No, that's what, that's what you said in that meeting, that you were gonna ride our two drivers, you've never said anything about it, the transfer station, this, that, y'all came up with that when y'all read the post. That, don't, don't do that damn thing.
We came up with that, Wayne, Chris?
When you read our post on Facebook.
Okay.
We heard you say all that on...
I can give you, I can give you the engineer Fisher and Arnold that I reached out to months ago, that's, that's looking, working with an architect to design the transfer station, months ago, we'll go with what you said.
Okay, well, then, 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 why didn't you tell me and John that?
When did that start?
Stop, why didn't you tell me and John that? When you told me and John this shouldn't kill y'all's deals, if we strike this down, right? Y'all told us that y'all would not, let me, I gotta clear my anxiety.
So when did that, when, how many months ago was that?
It's been a couple months ago, two or three months ago.
So was that already in the works whenever they, our contract was shut down?
When was your contract shot? I don't know, I didn't know that contract.
About seven or eight months ago.
When we was voted in.
There was no bid, there was no contract ever written.
There was a contract that was...
There was a written, there was a contract that y'all wrote.
Precedent shows that once it's voted, then it's basically just a formality.
But there was a contract that was written that had nothing to do, I wonder if we've argued this out here before, it wasn't even like the bid. And I read the contract, I got the contract, I mean, it's not...
Go ahead, John.
John, please, go ahead.
John Will, three, four, zero, three, double A, Sharp. Some questions, and then I'll get to my piece, and then I'll get out of here. You gonna enforce the, this is for humor's sake, you gonna enforce the code that's gonna make your dad finally put his trash on the road, or am I gonna just keep sending to pick up down that alley?
No, I've told everybody that alley that's gonna come out the street, and then they'll like it, but...
We're just flipping the mirrors off our trucks, that's good. When you realize you've heinously undercharged, because you're gonna pick up everything that people put out, and fourteen dollars turns into twenty-five, because you can't afford to pick up all the limbs and the mattresses and all the other crap that people put out that make our, their bottom lines so narrow, where you're gonna have something built in so you can jack the price up to where they're charging it, because that's what they gotta have to survive. So is it just gonna be fourteen to buy it up, we're gonna stick to it, we're gonna lose eight dollars to stop it?
Fourteen to sixteen is what we said, and we don't have that figured out.
Probably better jack that up a little.
Now, but, but, what, how's the...
So, so...
Probably, you're gonna lose money if you do.
As a utility that's been voted on by, by the council, just our gas, electric, water, all of those are limited to making a profit of six and a half percent. So if the cost of doing business goes up, the cost of business goes up, right? I mean, we're paying three times for transformers what we did two years ago. So I understand inflation and all of that. So we are limited on the amount of money that we're allowed to bank by the city council. The city council sets that amount, based on the assets of that utility.
But you do have the freedom to adjust upper, because if you do it at sixteen, you're gonna have to, especially if you're picking up limbs and...
But the limbs are going to compost and gonna be handled there, they're not gonna be handled, they're not gonna be taken on.
And I, and I, I agree with what you're saying, because as we start figuring cost on this thing, and, I mean, the state average is fourteen dollars, the national average is fourteen dollars. In the state of Missouri, it's between ten and, let's see, between twenty, ten and sixteen for trash service only, and in the United States, it's between twelve and twenty, that includes recycle costs. And I'm like, how in the world is it that price?
Yeah, that's not, where did you get those figures? Just, just Googled it, and it's the first one.
You Google it, find, you can find that, find that information.
Because there's certain, certain states that have sixty-four gallon cans, and they're charging fourteen to sixteen dollars.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, my, my naive to tell you when I got into business was I said, I would pick up two cans, for the set amount, and then I realized that most of the other companies in there, they only pick up one and charge additional, and so my bottom lines were awfully thin, because most of the properties had two ninety-six cans, and I'm pretty certain that they bring their children out there, and they set them on them and let them jump up and down a packing list as tight as they can. I hope that's a nice image for you. Well, I had questions, I didn't come with questions, I came to give my Mr. Deeds Goes to Washington speech, and then get out of here, and to give Adam Squire something to post about on Facebook. He seems, he seems awfully intent a lot of the time on the specifically addressing the things I say, so I'll just, I'll skip the questions, and we can answer those another time, but I will say this. Whenever this initially started, when somebody came and said, why don't we do municipal trash? We had gathering like this one, and people spoke out, and the one thing we seemed to We had gathering like this one and people spoke out. And the one thing we seemed to agree on in the room that day was nobody local, and we used that word local, and at the time I took offense to it because I was the only local carrier. Now, there were two mom and pops and we can expand the area to be local, but at the time I was the only guy in Kennet. But I still didn't want it because I knew if it went to bid against Republic and against Sharps, I was gonna be out of luck because they were both gonna underbid me. Because I was novice and people were getting two cans instead of one. So I fought it and we all agreed, everybody that was in attendance, that we didn't want to do any harm to anybody local. So, it kinda got put on the back burner, but not for a terribly long amount of time. And suddenly it was on council's agenda again and it got approved. Well, I didn't have a bid in then either because I had reached an agreement, not a behind door, not an underboard, just an agreement that I wasn't getting a bid. The reason being, I couldn't compete. My only chance to survive at that time was to not vote, hope to God that Sharps got the bid. People they were partnered with, Camo, I don't know what Camo stands for, but it was the investment group that they were working with, would then buy me out. Well, they got the bid, but then the city crawfished. So it took a bit of convincing, but I convinced Camo to, to outlers from them. Allegedly, if you're out there watching, so I don't get in trouble, allegedly stole eleven million dollars. And honestly, that deal fell through. So then, Sharpe now wanted to continue to do business and work toward that, and so he pursued financing. Well, I don't know if y'all heard the news, but the banking industry's not knocking doors down to loan money right now. And so after a long time of submitting all the forms they could to one of our local bankers, their loan was denied, so that fell through. And so then I had an agreement that I was gonna carry the note with them. And we did a spit handshake, but didn't sign a contract. And two days later, the article hit the DDD that this was happening. And so two years after all that started, and after all those lights at the end of the tunnel turned out to be trains, market was incorrect. I still own a hundred yards down the road. I still own trucks, although I'm not operating a business. But what this is gonna do in the course of two years is gonna bankrupt me. And Adam, yes, if you're listening, I do understand that's the risk of doing business. But it sure does harm to somebody local. So if this is voted in, so bid... Oh, I do recall the other question I wanted to ask, by the way. This is gonna be built separately? If, well, let's not even use trash. Let's talk about that two dollar mosquito spray we all joke about. If I were to elect to walk into City like Gas and Water office and say I wanna pay everything but two dollars on this bug spray, do I have to pay the bug spray? And if I drag that out over the course of time, will you shut my power off?
So we are talking with the attorney. We are working on ordinances to, um, say that if you don't pay your bill in full, yes, we will shut your utilities off.
Even for non-trash business.
Now, now, uh, so you know, the state of Missouri considers trash as a service. So it's not a tax. So it is a municipal service. They do actually consider that. And there's, there is litigation from years ago. The city of, people of Macon against the city of Macon. And the Supreme Court of Missouri came in favor of the residents. With the, the, the charge is a charge that they could make. And this act of courts found in favor of the city, saying that it's not an unreasonable charge, that they can't do that. And that they can't afford that money. So, so there, that's, that was, that was my concern too, because we talked about it, that, that they're gonna do this and people won't pay or don't have to pay, but there's, there's precedents and legalities that say you can't.
Well, it's good you're telling us because there was gonna be a pretty strong grassroots movement on Facebook, but and then the person who's gonna try to get everybody to not pay the trash portion of the bill.
Not to interrupt you, but I thought before we was told that they could not turn your power off if you did not pay the trash. Is that correct, Eric?
Yes.
So what's the difference now?
New councils?
There's, there's an ordinance here that says it's illegal not to pay trash service. There's a.
It's illegal, but we were told that you could not turn the power off if you did not. I don't mean to interrupt.
You're fine. I'm almost finished.
Then, then why not let us pay our money to who we want to provide for us? Instead of y'all choosing?
So, so, so I guess nobody cares that trash situation in the city of Kennet, but just... Is there anybody here that cares that it's a mess?
Yes, we do. We do care. We do care.
I am. What do you have to say about it? You're a rental person. John's up here. Yeah, John, well, John's up.
John, John may not be finished.
Sorry.
But I do fear that you all perhaps honestly nay to believe that this is gonna correct the human nature of the Vulcan population of Kennet. There's still gonna be trash. People are, even when they do pay it, they're not gonna put it out.
Right. So, and there are, there are people who throw it in their dumpster, in other people's dumpsters. There are people that take it to work, dump it in there. You know all this, John, right? You know this better than I do. But there is no way, and I said this on the radio this morning, there's one, if there's trash in front of somebody's house, is that because somebody's truck is broken down and they haven't picked it up yet? Is that because they haven't paid their bill and the person hasn't picked it up yet? There is no way to, there is no way for our property maintenance officers to know that. Now, if, if you can, you know, you pay everything but your fifteen dollars on your electric bill, I can say, Brian, here's a report of people who hadn't paid their bill. City ordinances say you have to pay trash service. He can write you a ticket for that. But at this point, and, and, and Kami and Chris said it, and they're not in the business of letting the city know who has and has not paid. They're in business to make money, which I'm, I'm all for that. They're a for-prov entity. That's what they're supposed to be doing. But they don't care if there's trash piled up in front of somebody's house because that's not their customer. They're gonna go on down the road to their customers and make money.
Uh, we do care. And I do run a report because after so many days of them not paying their bills, the account does get suspended. So, I mean, if that's the case, I could send you that list at the end of every month or the, whatever, if that's all it takes.
Since it's already been voted on and this is just for kicking around question and answer, or is the council voted on this officially? Of course, tonight it may change as they get to vote and put it on the ballot, but.
The council has officially voted on it at the last meeting.
So it's, this is just optics.
Well, we voted, we voted.
It says here in the last meeting.
Senator, City like Gas and Water.
The motion was only to present it to City like Gas and Water board members.
Yes, and, and then the City like Gas and Water Board delayed it so that all the members would be there at the next meeting in Kennet. And, uh, so.
He'll jump in through.
And after that, who knows what may happen during new business.
I was gonna tell you, John, I, I, I don't sit here and pretend to be the smartest guy in the room. I don't know what the right answer is, but I know what the wrong answer is. And the wrong answer is doing nothing and continue to do what we're doing. Because the town is not any cleaner or any better than it was twenty years ago.
And, and it's, it's, uh, what's the opinion, say, it's not my place to stand in the way of it other than to help you all understand that that original idea of not harming anybody locally is not coming to pass. This, this will, needs of the many outweigh the need of the few or the one, but this is, this is a chance for me to start over with nothing at the age fifty-five, so. You enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Again, we're talking about trash problems. I think we're not using the same. Trash, I think trash is ownership responsibility part of the business. They don't care about what they move in. They're not gonna worry about putting the trash up. I've seen a trash can sitting in the middle of the city with trash bags sitting around it. And they didn't care what did.
So, so the only thing, what we're saying for help is, is that the code enforcement, they know that Ward one will hit them on Monday, so. So they go into Ward two, I mean, Ward one on Tuesday, and there's trash, they know that it should've been put in, so they can go in and run it in for that. Or, or better yet, how, how Jonesburg does it. Jonesburg is people that run their trash trucks. They just, well, they see an infraction or they see a sofa, say, hey, there's a sofa at this location, boom, they just pin it, send it to the code enforcement. What they would do here, they would send it and say, hey, send a gravel truck up, pick us up. So, uh, the community, Jonesburg said the communication between the trash, there are people that handle that, which is the city of Jonesburg, and the code enforcement is real important and that. And it just, I mean, we really wanna work with the code enforcement and try to minimize trash and minimize court appearances. I mean, the court, I mean, Roddy Cook says, he said, "I'm in court all the time." He said, "I, I mean, every time I turn around, I'm getting another ticket." And he said, "I'm in court all the time." But, you know, spilling is court, these be dealing with real serious problems opposed to trash all the time. We'd like to minimize all that.
And what would you give, what would you give a grade to, I mean, are we cooking along here at sixty-five percent in town?
We do.
As far as cleanliness goes?
The town's dirty. And I think the town got dirty about when we dropped from homeowners, the majority, to renters, majority, and homeowners dropped because nobody takes responsibility that lives there to take care of them. I don't think we'll take responsibility here either. They may pay their bill. They may pile it up in the shed out back. But you can't go in the backyard, so it does no good.
But if you can see it from wherever.
You still can't go in the backyard, Rod.
I have to be able to, we have to be able to see it from the public way.
Can, can that be changed?
So, I don't know.
So here's where I'm at though. If we're at sixty-five percent, if we're, uh, uh, you know, and we get to a B plus, we're not gonna get to it. We're not gonna get to a hundred percent cleanliness.
You gotta look at it.
We can shift and, and clean up to about thirty percent and we're better off than we are today.
I seen you this morning by my neighbors with trash.
So at Portageville, uh, whenever we took over on Portageville, we do from, there's like a split line, Huffman in the east side, we do, east side of Huffman and the east side of town, all on Monday. And then on Wednesday, we do all of the dumpsters, you know, that are one time a week. And then they're Portage Village Apartments. And then on Friday, we do the west side of Huffman and the west side of town. So, they do know that, uh, if their trash is missed or whatever, they do have a trash, what is Johnson?
He's on trash committee.
Yeah. And so they contact him. If he sees that their trash is not picked up, he does go out there. So if we could arrange it where we were doing it Ward one one day, at which we've been working towards doing, um, that, that does help because it works in Portageville.
Can I speak?
Sure.
I just asked the council. I'm, I'm new and I'm not even familiar with all this. My name's Tony Far. Got just a question for the council. If you change your ordinance for the Sharps, can they do the same job? Or can the City like Gas and Water do the same job if you don't change your ordinance? Because they're playing unfairly here. If you're gonna change the ordinances to enforce all these rules, why don't you do that anyway?
So.
Just asking.
The ordinance, the, the ordinances are being changed to allow municipal to take over?
Exactly.
And they have in their.
Collecting the bill and make Kennet a better, more beautiful place.
Which that's what we all want, correct?
So it doesn't matter who cleans up the trash.
Yeah.
We just need to enforce the ordinances, which should fall back on code enforcement. Am I correct?
Tony, I, I know two, two people that have not gotten a bill since Ja, uh, since January. They get their trash picked up every month.
Right.
Has anybody that lives in Kennet not gotten an electric bill this month or last month or the month before? They already told, they already told us that they're having problems with the, the post office and all that stuff. They, they have issues going on there, but they're a for-profit business. So I don't know how much any time and energy they're gonna be able to spend communicating back to City Hall on people who aren't following the ordinance.
That's true. The City like Gas and Water makes six and a half percent profit, which is a profit business. Um, I don't know their bu, business. But I figure if you make one percent, that's a profit for a profit business. I'm just saying, if you guys are gonna vote on this, no concern of mine, just make sure it's fair. If you're gonna change the ordinances to highlight one company, it should've been done in the past. Where, because otherwise you're crippling a company, a local business like John Wheeler, that can't make it. But now all of a sudden, we're gonna change ordinances and do it right. Well, guys, that's sort of unfair. So, that's just what I do sense for. You guys are gonna vote the way you want to, so appreciate your time.
But the, the, the ordinances that are being changed, again, Tony, they're, they're gonna have to put, they're gonna have to hire bookkeepers just to let us know who is not following the ordinances, who's not paying their bills.
Yeah, I believe they wanted to know who was not paying the bill so the code enforcement can address that. The Sharp said she runs that report.
I do it. I have to do it. I know the same.
If you're gonna change ordinances, I'm, I'm just asking. If you're taking local businesses and all of a sudden you're, you're condemning, oh, you're not doing a great job. We're gonna do a good job, but we're gonna change the rules that they couldn't play by.
We're not really changing the rules. All we're doing is adjusting where it's municipal.
So we're not changing the ordinances, Mr. Far?
So like the prohibited practices here, this is section two thirty oh eight oh, which Terry alluded to. It said it shall be unlawful for any person to deposit solid waste in any container other than his own unless the owner says it's okay. That's what you were talking about. There is actually another, there's also in the building codes, it says you can't... This is more strenuous than what the building, building codes say. Uh, fail to have solid waste collected is provided in this article. And then, uh...
Is that the code enforcement or is that a track service?
This goes to code enforcement, but that's what we keep saying on the code enforcement. Problem of it is, Tony, if, if, if you got three houses here in a row and the trash keeps being hit around back or put out wherever because they don't have service, we, we have no way of knowing that they have service. The city has no way of knowing that they have service or not. We, we don't, we don't know who doesn't have service. I mean, Sharpe, what do you have? I, I don't have any customers you have here, but I think Republic has a hundred maybe. So, so if there's forty-two, if there's forty-two services out there, there's not forty-two hundred people being picked up. There's not forty-two households being picked up.
I, I just wanted to address with counsel and say, hey, that's fine. You guys do what you want to. That's why you're elected here. But make sure it's fair. I mean, you can't say, hey, we're gonna do this and not allow the other people on the same ordinances or, or the rule change.
Thank you.
Please, come on. Oh, and fortunately it's over. Well, the changes is to be as clear as possible opposed to, some, some of the stuff you'll read in some of the ordinances and laws, state laws and the building code laws are really hard to understand, so.
I always thought it was a people problem. I mean, City like Gas and Water could do a great job. And I'm, I'm all for City like Gas and Water. But on the same thing, if you can't change the people, then you're allowing one company to play unfairly by changing the rules in their favor.
But like you said, or said in the, City like Water meeting, you said it's the people problem and they're not gonna throw it in the trash can. But your dumpster gets full, filled up with other people's trash all the time. So they're trying to find somewhere to put their trash. They just don't wanna pay for it.
They don't wanna pay for it.
Did you mention ordinance that everybody, every house has had a trash?
That's supposed to already be an ordinance.
I mean, it's so easy to change ordinances, just change the orders. Everybody has had a trash can.
I mean, the ordinances on the public.
That alludes to what he said earlier. So there's forty-two hundred, there's forty-two hundred service locations in town. If, if Republic has one hundred, do you guys have forty-one hundred? No, there, there are not being forty-two hundred service locations picked up and there's no way to find that out.
Yeah, you get a list of Republics and then you know who don't.
Do you think, do you think Republic's headquarters is gonna wanna deal with Kent, Missouri sending them, who didn't pay their bill, to pay their bill three days late? So it's gonna show us a non-pay? It's gonna show us a non-pay and then they're gonna send it to us?
My report does show that, so.
The, the picture you put on, on, on social media there is of people they were four months behind.
I do have a question.
They weren't four months behind.
No, we just got them.
There were bills that caught two of them four months late. They were not four months.
No, they got sent back to me four months.
The bills that were returned to you guys, could not be delivered, showed that they were, they had, they owed eighty-eight dollars.
Well, that's a postal problem. I mean, but they paying, they're paying their bill.
Hey, I do have, I do have a question for you because I, I just didn't understand. I paid it because I paid online. I know you got that online service, such, so when you, when everybody had that forty-four dollars, and I paid it because it said forty-four dollars, I just paid it. Because I didn't wanna, I mean, I looked back and it looked to me like I paid every month like it's supposed to. Was that, did you miss a month of billing or?
No, I bill every month. I thought I paid my payroll, my dump fees, my fuel fees. I bill every month.
How did it come up to forty-four that month?
Are y'all talking about when we had to switch from Friendly to, uh, to us?
No, it's just like most recently.
Because somebody had to skip a month.
No, but, but the postal people.
Are you on automatic pay?
No, I go in there every month.
And you may have paid it after she sent the bills out.
But the postal people told me that every bill was forty-four dollars. How is that? Did y'all miss a month sending it out?
No.
But I, I just wonder if maybe you missed a month. Something happened because I, because every month I get a twenty-two dollar bill, but I'd already paid it.
The only way somebody's getting a forty-four dollar bill is if they missed a month.
Or if they sent, if they paid it after she had already sent the bill out.
Yes.
Because usually what happens is I pay it.
Payments and bills bypass each other in the mail, yes.
I pay it and then I get a bill, so then I've already paid it. And it, it, you look online, it shows it, right down the line. But then that forty-four dollars, that's when I paid it because I, I, I thought maybe there was a mistake. I made a mistake. I didn't do it right.
I do know what you're talking about and I will get with you on that because I do remember.
But that, that happened with a lot of people. That's what I'm just asking. It's the only reason I brought it up because it happened with a lot. I'm not the only person that's happened.
My name's Patty Tipp and I live in the north of Kennet. I have sharp trash service. I was just first that I'm for Play Enterprise and I think that we should have choices to who we have to pick up our trash. I'm not a good C L D, but y'all do good service, but, uh, as, I'm concerned about who to determine what is trash. concerned about who to determine what is trash, because my trash may be your treasure, and I see people with their stuff out in the yard, there's a house in town, I don't know where it is, they probably have over two hundred yard ornaments in their yard. It looks like junk and trash to me, but it's precious to them. There's a house right up the street from it, and this is on Ninth Street, and they have had, they have trash cans that are eyesores, because there's a trash can sitting in front of every apartment, and they're never moved, from what I've been able to tell, and one of the houses has, it looks like the entire household of furniture has been sitting out for like...
Were you talking about across Dillon Street, Dillon Park?
Yes, yes. If that's not a code enforcement problem, I don't know what would be, but there's also a house out in Hickory Village that has a container, you all know what kind of container I'm talking about, the kind that railroad, that trucks pull, so. It's sitting in their front yard, it is surrounded with lawnmowers, motors, motorcycles, bicycles, everything you can imagine. It's been out there for a few years, and one of the citizens out there haven't come forward and just en masse had something done about that, but, but that's not a code enforcement problem, I would argue.
That is.
So, how do we know any kind of code enforcement problems are gonna be enforced, they're not being enforced right now? Those are two huge eyesores.
I, I would, I would have, I would have to say they are. Brian, do you write any tickets?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the house I'm talking about?
Let me interject something here.
Please do.
As the fire chief and officer of the code enforcement, I assure you that those properties have been dealt with multiple times, and the one out in Hickory Village, we've been dealing with since I've been property maintenance.
But they're not fixed?
We write tickets, it's sent to the court, and all I'm telling you is they have court on Wednesdays, we can go see Judge Spelman, for the time we're hanging up. Our office is doing our job.
Okay, my point is, if, this is the way you're gonna handle things, and this is the way they get handled, where do we stand as far as making the city? I think it's a people problem, you can't legislate pride in people's properties, and that's just kind of what I have to say, I, I'm against it for those reasons. It's no more than, i- it's a person problem, and if they don't have any pride in what they live in, or what their streets look like, or anything, then I, I don't know the answer to it.
Well, I heard something today that, that kind of followed the law, so, somebody said, complained about this and that, and the different things, and they're saying, you know, we shouldn't, shouldn't do this, but when that was all of a sudden done after several texts back and forth, they said something that was really interesting, they said, and I don't take credit for this, someone told me this, they said, not every industry has a free market solution. So, you know what I'm saying, not every industry has a free market solution, and I think this is one of those situations that the free market isn't gonna fix it, because...
But a lot of people disagree with that.
A lot of people disagree.
But anyway, those are the things that I just wanted to point out. I've been, I've, if anybody knows where I live, they know I take great pride in my property, and I think our whole neighborhood pretty much does, and I've got several people from our neighborhood out here tonight. I think most of us use Sharp, and we've been satisfied with the customer service that we've had, I certainly have been, but I just, I, I think the problem runs much deeper than trash cans, period.
Thank you, Ben.
And I, 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 I'm gonna agree with you on that totally, but with that being said, we can't do nothing. If we do nothing, it's never gonna get fixed. I mean, unless we change, make change, it's not gonna get fixed.
I think you might need to make the penalties more...
Who is speaking?
Bob Holmanson. They need to put them people in jail that don't clean their stuff up, or raise the, raise the price, bill them so much that they'd have to move.
I don't want them to do that, Terry.
But they ain't doing nothing now, if you don't clean up the places. Them giving them tickets out, you might as well throw them out the truck with, because they ain't doing no good.
Also, we do...
If you make it stiff enough, they'll, they'll clean up that mess.
It's up to the judge on that.
And some of that is, some of the teeth, when I say the teeth that we don't have right now, the ordinances, as we went through ordinances to try to write new things and make it better, there's, there's some teeth in it that, that make a difference. The way the ordinance was written back a long time ago, you got to call out, what this attorney said to me, he said, when you write an ordinance, five other things pop up that are messed up now, so then you gotta fix that, and then five more pop up, so it's not really easy. If you ever read through all this stuff, you understand what I'm talking, I mean, I've read it to a point of, I'm starting looking at it, because it's, it got me confused, and because, and I, I told him when I met with him, I said, you know, I've gone over this so much, where I, say, well, there's, there's an ordinance, or there's a law against that, I can't remember if it's our ordinances, or if it's state, or who it is. So, uh, but, that's what we wanna try to fix, I mean, we're trying, trying to help code enforcement, trying to help the city get better. Diane, I, who are you talking about there, you got anything to say?
I pay so price.
We got less than ten minutes.
You let Mr. Carl sit there, so let me sit here.
Okay.
Could you come to the front?
Come on, Diane, show them.
I'm not usually one to volunteer. He asked me, all I know is my experience. After I've read all this, I sat down and I made a list, because we do property investments in half a year, and I think some of y'all up there, I know you have before, and we have bought right at two dozen properties in nine different towns, and I've sold some of them off, but we've been doing this for about twenty years, and I have never had one complaint from the code enforcer on any of those properties that had the city pick up, like one of them's high tide, and I still have, you know, I sold it way before last. They pick up the couches, they pick up the limbs, they pick up the trash, they pick it all up. In fact, my daughter-in-law's from over there, and I'm real, and they just come over here, and they just go like, what? Didn't nobody pick this up? Because, I mean, they are so spoiled over there. It happens. So why wouldn't there be a couch sitting out? Why wouldn't there be an actress sitting out? Why wouldn't there be men sitting out? Because if anybody can get rid of those and have them, instead of having them right in their face, right under their nose, they would have to be a pretty ridiculous person not to move them out of the street. But I've had right at two dozen houses in nine different towns, you know, all of those, I was blessed, had, with the city collective money, and I have never had to go to court once, and I cannot tell you how many times I've gone here and...
You also, as a, as a landlord, you also pay for your trash pickup?
I did for fifteen years, and then when y'all changed the code back in December, I sent everybody a note, and I said, I was my hope here two thousand twenty-three to be consistent, so I said, it might not be on your bill in January, but you pay it, because that won't mess up my records, and then it'd be on your bill in February, and then they changed horses after I had already told everybody. Some of them had gone to Sharps, some had gone to Republic, and come to find out, I had them then to do squat. But I just was so thankful, it was one of me took out from utilities, because I believe in free industry too, but I do not think this industry is one that can necessarily take care of a city if you don't have it collected as a blanket deal.
Thank you.
But I'm not against anybody working, and I like everybody here, and I wish that all those people that might lose their jobs, they're very well-trained, they know how to get out there and get done, I wish they would go knocking at the door in Kennet, and rather than train people, I wish they hired them.
Yes, sir.
I assume that someone with some kind of credentials has looked over your figures, and it says it don't be a viable business, City Light Water running it like ten years from now, will it still be able to do what you're supposed to do?
Yes, you know, I mean, in case you don't know, with City Light Water, is we're the fourth lowest utility or electric rate in the state. It's a fourth out of every single town in the state. So pushing the price down and stuff is important to City Light Water, save people money. Fourth, fourth lowest in the state.
Between calling him a communist and saying, I wish, I wish Amer would come into town, and I wish he's, you know, you look at twice the rate per kilowatt hour, twice.
And, and I, I just, I mean, I don't have an out for anybody, I don't, I, I got asked to do something, and like anything else, I get asked to do, I jump right in it very hard, and I, I, I just, I was asked by some individuals, and I went to them, and Bill asked me, and then, Bill, like, fix this, and then, I mean, I'm just like, all right, I mean, I guess we'll look at it. I get paid to do it, I'm just, I spend a ton of time, ton of man hours, a ton of, I mean, driving the cities, talking to people, looking at how they do things. I, I mean, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but I, I'm not, I, I don't think I'm a communist, I mean, I'm not that, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to help people.
Does, uh, City Light Water have resources to, for this tremendous capital investment they're gonna have?
Say that again?
Do you have resources?
Do you have resources enough to cover the tremendous capital investments you're gonna have?
Yes, sir. And part of the plan, part of the plan is to, this was after talking to several cities, I, I don't think I thought up all these things on my own, a lot of them was just going to cities and them saying, this is what really works, and this is what doesn't work, and so, so we've been told by A-City, that the best thing they ever do, did was when they went to leasing these trucks and, and changed them every few years, new lease system, the new trucks are on the road all the time. So that's one of the things we're looking at, opposed to buying the trucks.
And just, just a point of information, you're all talking about, the, the plan is that the city government and the city utility would be two separate organizations. The city government would have nothing to do with finances, vice versa.
Exactly. There's, 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 if, the fee is not a tax, it's actually a fee, Towny alluded to that earlier, um, you can't cross subsidies, so I can't, there's been talk about, well, my, my electric rates are gonna go through the roof. There are state laws that do not allow electric rates to be applied to any other utility, just like I can't support the water, or I can't, you know, build an internet and, and not pay back monies. There are state laws, and we've, we've been audited every year for the last seventy-plus years, so you can go out and look, we have not had any problems with cross subsidies.
Listen, Jared, just get ready for the...